Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I'll ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rose Burgen?
Here.
Mr. Klein Deans?
Here. If you all please rise for the flag salute. You'll place your hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight our invocation is by Dr. Phillips from the Church of Religious Science. Dr. Phillips, thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate you making time for us. We welcome your comments, sir.
On the first day that I thank you, this council very much for my wife and I having the opportunity of bringing the invocation. It's a real privilege. Thank you very much. Let's take a moment and acknowledge the presence of God. For a moment we simply stand in awe and realize when we acknowledge that one, we're acknowledging something that is always there. But the night, it's a very special night. Decisions must be made. But thank God, we have these dedicated committee council members and they're making the right decisions. Because within them, they know the right. And so they take that position tonight. There's harmony here. There's a sense of peace. There's a sense of knowing that this is a beautiful community, Palm Springs. We're a part of it. It has infinite possibilities. We give thanks for this and so much more. And so it is.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Under Presentations tonight, we have two scheduled. We have a certificate of appreciation from Michael Holtzman from the Rent Review Commission. Michael, are you here? Didn't see you in the audience earlier. Perhaps we'll hold off on Michael's until the time he can come to receive the award. Okay. Let's now turn then to Diane Kaiser from the American Lung Association. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure for me to be here this evening. And I have the honor of presenting to the city of Palm Springs, the American Lung Association's Platinum Lung Award. And you are recipients of just a very few cities in California that are receiving this award. The Platinum Lung Health Award is given by breath and it's the California Smoke-Free Bars, Workplaces, and Communities Program. This is a statewide project of the American Lung Association. And this is to recognize the highest compliance. You have 95% compliance with the California Smoke-Free Workplace Law. And this includes all workplaces, all restaurants, and bars. So this is really an honor for your city. Most jurisdictions in California have reached 80% compliance. But there are 471 incorporated cities in this state and only 25 have achieved what you've achieved. So on behalf of the Lung Association, we would like to present you with the Platinum Lung, and I will give it to the mayor. And also I would like to acknowledge the Department of Health in Riverside County. And several members are here tonight. Mr. Marvin Baxter, Mr. Jim Schnepper, and Mr. Bob Peterson, who could not be here this evening. They have helped a lot along with your police department and also code enforcement in the sheriff's office. So I will present this to you. And there are also lapel pins for each member of the council.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We of course all thank Diane and the American Lung Association for their award. My question to her was, where are the other 5% and how can we stop that from happening there too?
Well, we're going to leave it to the gentlemen that are here tonight to find that other 5%. And you'll see on your little lapel pin, it says "Golden Lung." We couldn't fit the word "Platinum" on the lapel pin, so everybody gets Golden Lung awards, the little lapel pin. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We'll wear it proudly. I'll now turn to the city clerk for reporting on the posting of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you have before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, February the 14th. In addition, there was a supplemental, two supplemental agendas posted at that time for items concerning the Easter Bowl, the Riverside County Date Festival, council rules and procedures, meeting duration, and the tribal distribution fund. The council did receive materials via fax today regarding those four items and item 17. In addition, I do have materials available should the council desire regarding items 3, 6, 13, 15, 18, 20, and 23.
Those items aren't at the desk now. I guess they're being sorted and compiled for our review, so we'll get those when they're ready. Let's turn now to our city attorney, Mr. David Alshire, for a report on the closed session. Mr. Alshire?
Yes, council and agents met in closed session. Of the items listed, real property negotiations involving Plaza Theater and Riff Markowitz, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving Gebe Geiger LLC concerning the dump site property, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving JB Gold, Stark Canyon Resorts, was not discussed. Real property negotiations involving Parcel and Tramview Road, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving the youth center facility, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Litigation matters, litigation involving Desert Water Agency settlement negotiations, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property, I'm sorry, litigation matter, Sun Gold Development, again, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure to litigation in two cases was not discussed, nor the initiation of litigation. There wasn't a closed session item added involving a litigation matter with Willie Holland concerning a parcel of property. The, we gave a status report on the litigation matter, no action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Alshire. The Housing Authority, the Financing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and the Community Redevelopment Agency have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting. We'll now turn to public comments. I have a number of cards requesting to speak. If I may call the speakers forward to form a line, a queue. We'll allow three minutes, and there's a timer in front of Ms. Hodges and myself that steps down from three minutes. First to the podium, please, Mr. Steve Payne, followed by David and Gail Shearer, is that correct? And then Alan Bidwell, followed by Ed Svetak, and then Mary Jo Ginther. Good evening.
Good evening. I think about all the times that I've stood here in the past, and it usually seems I'm trying to influence the council or we're trying to get something going with the city. And instead tonight, I just wanted to thank the city. And in particular, the city council that gave us the support two years ago that we needed. Unbridled, naked support. To make the bridge a reality. Every single person sitting up there stuck their neck out, went beyond the call of duty, put up with I don't know how many phone calls for me and from others, pro and con. And to have a council that would do something like that, I don't know what to say. I mean, it's just, I was on the bridge today and I was thinking that it's truly a reality. And it's a reality, yes, because of the money and the people that bought it and so on. But it wouldn't have happened without the five of you. For general information, according to Chelsea Carter with AP Wire Services, the story has run in just under 800 newspapers worldwide. I did a live interview with the BBC. It was in The Guardian in London and Le Monde in Paris. CBS Television has been out and they want to film the first three episodes of a pilot at the resort and in Palm Springs that will be prime time in the fall. The response has been overwhelming, but it started here with you guys. The other day when we had the opening, I started naming names, you always forget someone, and I forgot a couple of really important names. Jerry Ogborne and what he has done in Uptown Palm Springs, and done specifically with us and for us and for that part of Palm Springs, has been tremendous. He is a major asset to our town. Lou Penrose came over with Mary Bono's staff. Very supportive. We wouldn't let Lou on the grounds, of course, but he was out by the bridge. So that's really the only reason I came here tonight, was to thank all of you. And it's now a reality, and whether it's the nude bridge, the naked bridge, the bridge of thighs, the Baxandal Bridge, it is truly a landmark and I hope the city is excited as we are. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Steve. David and Gail Shearer, please, followed by Alan Bidwell. Good evening.
Hi. We also want to thank you, but for something not as drastic, of course. My name is Gail Schultz and both of us live at 387 Desert Holly. And we wanted to express our gratitude.
We're kind of short-term residents here. And from our standpoint, and also on behalf of the Palm Springs Modern Committee, we'd like to thank you for your support and also, in a big way, and it's kind of belated, thank you, but for purchasing the Albert Frey Design Tramway Gas Station that will now become the visitor's center.
We moved here from New York, if you can believe, not only for the weather, but also for the architecture that makes Palm Springs really special. And we just love it here, so thank you.
And we just wanted to thank you for your support of what's the preservation issues here. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for coming down. Alan Bidwell, followed by Ed Svetak and Mary Jo Ginther. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Alan Bidwell. I'm a seven-year full-time resident of Palm Springs. And I'm here tonight to talk about our Village Fest. Each Thursday night, over the next six weeks here in Palm Springs, our Sunup Rotary Club here in Palm Springs is participating in a drive to help raise $80 million to help eradicate polio in the five remaining countries around the world where polio still exists. We therefore invite you to come down and try your skill during one of the next five Thursdays in what we call Putt for Polio. You get one ball, it's a practice ball, and then you give us $3 for our drive, and we give you two balls and give you the chance to win a valuable prize at this event called Putt for Polio. Currently, we're involved in an attempt to complete the total eradication of polio throughout the world by the year 2005. And we're well on our way. We've raised almost $500 million to buy the vaccine, the drops. And your dollar buys eight inoculations of children in one of the remaining five countries. So we invite you to consider coming down and trying your skill. No previous experience is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm just glad it's not a dunk tank for the council. Five bucks! Good evening, Ed.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Ed Svetak with the Palm Springs Riviera, also Vice President of the Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association. I'm here on two issues tonight, the first one being the American Heat Bite Weekend. I'd like to make it known that the Board of the Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association voted in November at our board meeting to fully support the return of this weekend, along with a vote from Main Street Merchants on February 6th, a board meeting which the mayor and David Reddy was at. And I also have a letter from Matthew Tlala from Atlas and Village Pub, who couldn't be here today. He's taking his first vacation in two years. He's in Puerto Rico presently, so I wanted to read that to you. "To the Honorable Mayor and City Council, the return of Bike Weekend. I think Bike Weekend is vital to our economy. Since the chief of police is up to the challenge of handling another Bike Weekend, I think it is the duty of the city council to keep the balance between business and safety. Down Valley has become more and more competitive, and since we are the city that specializes in the downtown that offers art and entertainment, then we better keep our events and add to them rather than losing any of them. Please do not deny the planners and the people who are putting on this weekend the growth of facing a challenge." And the growth of facing a challenge. Let us meet the challenge and make it work. Thank you, Matthew Tlala. I've also got a handout that I'm not sure that you had received from Mr. Reddy with regard to some numbers on Bike Weekend and some past weekends. Unfortunately, I don't have the 10 copies, but I'll give one to you that you can review later. In a quick synopsis, in 2001, one month after 9/11, the Riviera Resort over that particular weekend had its best Saturday night from an individual travel weekend that we've had in nine years. And understand that there's a lot of other issues that need to be dealt with, but from a business perspective, it was, again, in nine years, the best Saturday night in an October that we had ever seen with people traveling. And so the compression, the certain events that were happening on that weekend made it a great event. So I just wanted to make sure that you realize that. And then my next item is the Easter Bowl and to once again, thank you for your past support and hopefully future support. I believe you received a fax from Sina Hamilton outlining exactly where the money is earmarked, which is for a TV show that cost approximately $40,000 to undertake. So it's a great PR for the city. It's a great PR for the valley in general. And again, thank you for your past support and hopefully future support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Mary Jo Ginther. Good evening, Mary Jo.
Hello. I'm Mary Jo Ginther, General Manager of the Hyatt Regency Suites, President of the Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association. Along with that, on behalf of the association, we look to welcome back the Bike Weekend after a year's absence. We thank you for considering the return of the group, which was sorely missed last year. This has brought in considerable TOT. The retail value has been considerable as well. We welcome Randy Burke with Roadshow. We look forward to a great event this October. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments, please come forward at this time. No other cards before me. If you are here for a public hearing, we will call you at that time during the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Tom Plantigan. I live at 3863 Cai, San Antonio, Palm Springs, California. I'm here to urge this evening the passage of a variance of 6.465 on appeal from the Planning Commission. I have read the staff report and the resolution therewith, and I supported both of those. And I appreciate the help everyone has given us to try to solve this terrible problem. Again, we hope that you will be able to make a decision on this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Willie Holland, Pastor Holland, from Push Apostolic Ministries, a community, Desert Highland Gateway, which is a community I'm very concerned about, concerned about the eminent domain and how it was, the whole area was exempt from eminent domain and how the language changed that we will not touch residential housing. And how residential housing has been established, okay? And all we really wanted was to be totally sure that all the houses would be protected from eminent domain. Since that time, I've been working in an area, so I'll give you this other issue that's before the council and a proposal that I have for turning the neighborhood around. There's a property that's scheduled for demolition. And I made a proposal to reconstruct it. And if you look at the thing that I have before you, like a general estimate of what it would entail, okay? What it would be is a six-bed facility. It used to be a four-plex, which the owner has walked off and left because of the city rezoning and the eminent domain process, okay? And what I would like to do, this house has been used, I mean, this apartment since it's been vacant, has been vandalized. It's been used as a gang training ground, because what happens is they start beating holes and they're like, I guess we all animals at nature, where we get territorial and say, this belongs to me, okay? So I would like to take that and I would like to make a six-bed facility, which would be very viable to the community. It would create jobs in the community, okay? And when I put in the bid, they had $35,000 to demolish it, plus they had costs that was court costs and a long drawn-out process, which kept the property vacant for over two years and in turn became vandalized and the whole bit, okay? Now it's time to turn it around. I bid $45,000 to demolish it, okay? And I'll take out to reconstruct it, I'll take the $35,000 that we have and with some in-kind work, with some volunteers, plan on making a nice building, okay? So I bid it to reconstruct it, $35,000.
Thank you, Willie. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Kleindins. Mayor Potam, City Council. My name's Joy Meredith. I own Crystal Fantasy in beautiful downtown Palm Springs, and I'm also honored to be the President of Main Street, the Merchants Association of Downtown. And tonight, I'm here to discuss Bike Weekend with you. You know, last year, it was a tough year. Some unfortunate incidents in Laughlin caused the police department to feel that it was not in our best interest to have the event, and so, the Merchants Association decided with the police department on that based on safety issues only, because we were looking at it through a little peephole to just see that. But I think that the merchants spoke very loudly, very clearly. In fact, they provided me with several hundred signatures that they got from other customers of theirs and such. There's many more than I had here. And I've never really seen such an outpouring for bringing back an event, and so, I just feel that this year, it's really our responsibility to go ahead and bring back that event based on those ideas. It went to Main Street at our last meeting, and it was voted unanimously that we did want to bring back Bike Weekend. We feel that the police department can, because there haven't really been any issues in this year's time, we feel confident that this is going to be a great event. The issues that we have had with Randy in the past, we feel very comfortable that he's going to address all of them, and we've gone over them with him on a point-by-point, and it seems that everything's gonna work out just fine. We're really excited to have it back. Is it a noisy event? Yeah, it's a noisy event. There are three days a year, then, that we're asking for noise. But, you know, it's a really fun and exciting event, and with that's gonna come a little bit of noise. I mean, if you want to talk noise, we could talk leaf blowers, but I'm gonna leave that for another day. But I just feel like, you know, Randy's been a good guy. He's been an excellent promoter, wonderful to work with, and I feel like I just owe that to him. But Main Street supported him fully, and that is, that's just the way that the merchants have decided to go on that, and we back him completely. There were a couple issues. For example, the three beer gardens possibly, the between Takwitz and Alahoe, but we've already discussed them, and we feel that we have that resolved as well. So, I just really want to say, we want to bring back Bike Weekend, and we really urge you to support that. I did want to say one other thing on another subject, and that's number 23. Mr. Alshier has been a really kind and good man. He's very straightforward, and I see that you're gonna be discussing his contract here. I just think that he's a great guy, and I really feel that he has this city's best interest at heart. And in the times that I've dealt with him, it's, I just, I can't really say enough about it. He's just been so kind and open. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joy.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. My name is Avstop Dada, and I'm the General Manager of the Hilton. Tonight, I'm here in front of you representing the large and small hotels, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the October Bike Weekend. Last year, we sorely missed that weekend. It was a tremendous loss for not only the hoteliers, but all the merchants in town. I would also like to share a small story. Two years ago, during the Bike Weekend of 2001, I received a call from Hilton Hotels Corp. from Beverly Hills requesting that a VIP from Hilton, a customer was going to be coming in for the Bike Weekend, and the Hilton was sold out. They couldn't get any accommodations at any other hotels, and if I would make an exception, which I went ahead and did, happens to be the President of a medical manufacturing company out of San Diego. The name of the company is PET Mobile, and this President came and stayed with us, and he was so happy and satisfied that we accommodated him, that for the past three years, he's been bringing a small conference to the Hilton in Palm Springs every year, and that group has generated in excess of $100,000 just alone for the Hilton. So, I'm here to let you know that the economic impact, not only for the hoteliers, but all the other merchants that enjoy that particular weekend is absolutely tremendous. We've been working very closely with the Chief of Police, and we've already committed, especially the large hoteliers, to provide complimentary accommodations for that particular weekend. If the Chief would like to bring in some intelligence people from out of town to help have this a safe event during the October weekend, and I would like for you to get this approved tonight for us, and thank you.
Thank you, Avtop. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Very good, Sina. We'll close public comments. We'll turn now to the consent calendar. Members of the council, there are 11 items. If there are any items you wish to pull for separate votes, ask questions on, or note your abstentions, please do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rellis Spurgeon.
I need to abstain on two warrants, 984545, 984666, both husband-related.
Very good. Thank you, Jeanie. Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I also need to abstain on a warrant, 98443, business-related. And also, I have a correction in number one. Do you want to deal with that now or pull it?
If you can note your correction in one, maybe we can just add it to our motion. How's that?
It really, it is, it's more of, the clerk recorded it correctly, but since then, I found out it was different. It has to do, I'm looking at page, I guess it's the second page of the minutes under abstentions. At the top, it says, "Agency Counsel Member Mills stated conflictions regarding pertaining to 9D." I've since found out it's 9I. Other than that, it is a perfect set of minutes.
The correction note that it's not 90, it's 9I. Any other corrections or changes?
I'll move the consent agenda.
One second.
Second motion, a second. My only comment is that on item three, the intent here is to work in cooperation with the Agua Caliente Band of Kewee Indians. We are attempting to seek federal funding to allow us to develop the Indian Canyon Drive and Interstate 10 interchange. And this, again, is a prime example of the two governing bodies of the City of Palm Springs working in cooperation to seek, hopefully, federal funding to resolve what is already a tragically congested interchange. Indian and, for that matter, Geno Atri are suffering right now, and we did lose some recent funding sources from Sacramento, so this is a nice attempt to see if we can get those dollars replaced by T3 money. Okay? We have a motion on the floor in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Oden.
Aye.
Ms. Rellis Spurgeon.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It's 5-0 and deemed unanimous. We'll now turn to our public hearing. The first case before us in the public hearing is item number 12, case 5.0916, 5.0938, and 5.0941. These are general plan amendments for land use and circulation. I'll turn to Mr. Reddy for his staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Enry, a charitable remainder trust, and I would ask Mr. Evans, our Director of Planning, to give you the details on this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a public hearing on three items that affect our general plan. All three items have companion items on the remainder of your agenda tonight as public hearing items. Because of the way state law works relative to general plan amendments, we're only allowed to amend general plan elements four times per year, and we had to batch these together into separate public hearings, so we met the intent of state law. So, what we've done is we've got the general plan actions for the next three items on your agenda under this item, and then we'll talk to you about the actual projects that go along. So, you've got companion issues. There's three general plan amendments. Two of them are land use amendments. One is for a piece of property located off of Matthew Drive, and I'll show you in a moment where it is. The change of zone request is from medium-density residential to general commercial and conservation. The trust, Dragizavich Charitable Trust, owns this property. This property was subject to quite a bit of debate in 1993 when we looked at the general plan as to where the zone and general plan boundary should be, and the trust, after looking at the property, has asked that the line be moved over a little bit, and I'll show you that on the map. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of that change, and as you'll note in the staff report, the commission had some concerns about existing land uses. Currently, there's an auto body repair shop. That property will be brought up to all current code if the change of zone is approved, because it will no longer be non-conforming, and the change of zone goes along with the general plan amendment. The boatyard, one of the most unique land uses we have in town, it's the only place I know in town where you can actually go and find, if it's still there, a vintage World War II submarine engine from a German submarine, and it looks like it's ready to be shipped the last time I looked at it. That particular land use is moving out of town and will be gone by approximately March 15th. The second amendment to the general plan has to do with an application by Laguna Pacifica for the Canyon Vista partnership to amend the general plan down on Bogart Trail, or excuse me, Murray Canyon and Sierra Madre, and that general plan amendment would be from medium-density, 15 units per acre, to high-density residential, 30 units per acre for the property located, as I indicated, on Murray Canyon. This project was subject to a letter that you received from the Tribal Council. It's a letter that we actually put in your packet in conjunction with item, it's companion item 15A. The Tribal Council, in their letter to the City Council, did recommend approval of the general plan amendment, subject to the appropriate conditions. They did not recommend approval of the companion project, and I'll address that part of their letter at that public hearing item time. So, we do, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this general plan amendment. It's consistent with the property to the west, which is a high-density timeshare project, and it fits in pretty well with the property to the east, and I'll show you where that is in a moment also. The third general plan amendment that we have tonight is a request by Palm Springs Modern Homes 2 LLC for amendment to the general plan circulation element to remove a portion of unimproved Arenas Road between Sunrise Way and Hermosa Drive. That particular stretch of roadway currently dead ends in an adjacent situation next to an existing care facility off of Sunrise and at Hermosa. It does not go through at that point. The Section 14 master plan, which had a circulation study, indicates that that roadway is not necessary. The properties that are to the north of this would have access off of Takwitz, Sunrise, and Hermosa, and then the tennis center is to the west of this property, and we went over that project at your last council meeting, showing how the tennis courts would fit on that property. Commission does recommend approval of all of these general plan amendments, and very quickly, I'll show you the exhibits.
Yes, I need to abstain on item number 14. Due to the proximity of my work.
The question is, she has, I believe, an abstention on item C, the third one only.
12C.
Yes.
She certainly has to leave for that. The question is whether, if these are always all packaged as one.
As the record show, that Ms. Rellis Spurgeon is leaving the chamber based on her conflict because of her proximity of her employer. We can call her back, Mr. Alshier, for item 13, and she'll leave again on 14. Is that correct? Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you very much. The first general plan amendment I indicated is off of Matthew. It's basically Matthew Drive. This is Rimrock Shopping Center. The subject property is located bounded by red. The car repair facility is in the front. The boat facility is in the rear. This is the desert, new desert produce, which is now a new land use in this location. When the Planning Commission looked at this in 93 as part of the general plan, the decision was where should the zone or general plan boundary be, and the commission at that point moved it over to this location, which made these two properties non-conforming. The charitable trust originally owned through the Dragizavich family, this whole parcel, the adjoining property owner here is in full support of moving the general plan boundary back over to make these two properties potentially conforming. The second one is the Vista Canyon Project. It takes the property off of Murray Canyon, South Palm Canyon, Sierra Madre to approximately this location and changes the general plan designation to higher-density residential. This was the former site of the tennis complex for the Canyon Hotel. It's been since demolished, and you have similar general plan designation in this location. You've got medium-density residential, 15 units per acre here, and this one would bump up to be consistent with this. There would still be the existing setback to the single-family residential that exceeds 200 feet, so this would not result in an encroachment of a two-story building any closer than you could build by right-of-zone under the current zoning. This is the second item. The third item has to do with this section of Arenas Road. This would be Hermosa. It currently is not extended down to Baristo. It ends here at Hermosa. At this point, is a half-street. There's a half-street built off of Sunrise in this location, and what this general plan amendment would do would be to take this collector roadway off the general plan, and these parcels would have access on the adjoining properties, and the tennis center complex would actually function much better with a greater setback. The Planning Commission recommends approval of all three of these items. We'll certainly try to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question while Doug's there?
Yes, by all means. Ms. Hodges.
Doug, on the last one, Hermosa is not being taken away, the northern portion.
No, it would not.
That has nothing to do with this. This is strictly the Arenas portion of it.
That is correct. If the general plan were built out, Hermosa would come all the way down and connect Takwitz to Baristo.
Okay. Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Evans, on the Palm Springs Modern one, the Arenas one, this is eliminating Arenas, even that little half-street that's there now, that portion would also be eliminated. So, the one half would go back to Windsor Court, I think it is, and then the other half would go back to the property owner on the north. Is that correct?
Well, at this point, we're only removing the street from the general plan.
But that ultimately...
The existing improvement would stand the way it is, and when this project develops, and you'll see that in a subsequent public hearing, if you'd like me to show it to you, I can show you the plan. Basically, we would end up with a cul-de-sac-type turnaround at this location with the intent that this roadway, which does provide access into Windsor Court, would probably remain as access to this property, this property, and this property. And I can show you that. This is the existing end of the roadway, and basically, this is Windsor Court and their parking facility, and to basically terminate that roadway and provide access to those two properties, it would be a cul-de-sac.
So, my question is then, so it's staying as a street, but it's not a general plan street?
Correct. We're not recommending that we vacate the right-of-way. That would be a different type of action.
And what is the advantage to having it? I understand the advantage of the continuation of it.
Mm-hmm.
What I don't understand is the advantage of it, of taking it off from there up to Sunrise. Why would we want to vacate it as a general plan street then?
Well, from the standpoint, we don't think we need...
I don't mean vacate, I mean eliminate.
The size of street that's called out on the general plan.
Okay, I understand.
And in the future, what we'll be able to do is build it as a local street, so there wouldn't be as much dedication off of the north parcel. We would keep the curb line on the south the same, and we'd end up with basically a street that would be offset centerline, and we would... street that would be offset centerline, and we wouldn't have a full collector roadway in all likelihood.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions before we open the public hearing? Again, anyone here wishing to address the council on public hearing number 12, the general plan amendments for land use and circulation, please come forward at this time. Mr. Mayor, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Lloyd Marinov. I'm here as my, in my capacity as co-trustee of the Drigizavich Charitable Remainder Trust. And I think this has been well-covered by the Planning Commission and by staff, and we appreciate the work that they put into it. And I'll just say, I'd be glad to answer any questions, if any come up, on this item or the next item concerning the Drigizavich Charitable Trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the council, welcome. It's good to see you again, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to address the council during this public hearing on item number 12? Please come forward at this time. Mr. Ruse.
Mr. Mayor.
[laughing]
Marvin Ruse with Monero Smith &amp; Associates, representing Palm Springs Modern Homes. This item has actually been, was proposed to be removed from the general plan by the Section 14 plan, but that's been kind of stuck in the, the variety of processes for several years now. And in taking a look at the, the overall area and looking at how Section 14 has worked, a variety of, of forces would say this street is not necessary. In fact, it may, as a through, through street would actually be somewhat harmful inasmuch as it would create another intersection on Sunrise that might carry more traffic and eventually need another signal. So hopefully, by having, in a sense, a local stub that creates just a, in a sense, a minor access, more or less emergency access to our project, kind of a minor amount of access to Windsor Court for their parking area, and eventually maybe to the commercial properties to the north. This provides some secondary access, emergency access for fire trucks and the like, provides a, an access for the resident, potential future residents of our project. Hopefully, will not need a, an entire street. All the properties have other streets that provide access, and at least one street, if not two. This is very similar to what we did at the convention center with Andreas, not taking Andreas through, so that the convention center could be a larger project. And that has not proven to be a detriment to circulation in Section 14. So we're in support of the staff recommendation, Planning Commission recommendation, to eliminate that from the general plan. We see that street as staying. We're dedicating our cul-de-sac portion, but don't think that a full street is necessary for the relatively minor amount of traffic that would use it. But even that, again, could result in a potential signalization problem on Sunrise, which we'd like to avoid. And here to answer any questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruse. Anyone else wishing to address the council during this public hearing? Very good. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, turn to council for comments, questions, or action if desired. Council? Mr. Mills.
Just a, a question of, of Mr. Evans regarding the Murray Canyon piece. So the, the general plan essentially is, 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 is proposed to modify from 15 to 30 per acre on that, on the tennis court area, the old tennis court area, which is essentially carrying that designation across Sierra Madre and putting it against an R2, which is 15 of the acre. What, what's the logic in that? When you have a natural buffer between two, 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 two...
Two densities.
Two densities.
Well, when we took a look at the, the subject property and its configuration, we took a look at, at what you could do relative to development of that property and at the, the higher-density designation because of setback criteria, building height criteria and configuration, you end up with a, a project that's very similar in mass and scale. It's a two-story development that would fit. So for all purposes, relative to how you would see it from the street, you know, you're taking a look at a project that would be fairly compatible. And if you'd like to see the street elevations for that particular project, I could show you that. When the Planning Commission looked at this, they looked at it as a package. We took the general plan amendment to them as a public hearing with the project so that they could look at it in a companion-type situation. As we worked with Vista Canyon, when this particular group had the lease for the Canyon Hotel, we had also looked at, at this being an extension of the hotel property. And for the past few years, it was in, you know, we knew that we were going to get a request to take a look at, at taking the density up a little bit so that you could get a viable project on it. Early at 15 units per acre was a little bit tough to probably make it work. The Planning Commission, when they looked at it, while street barriers are really a good logical place to change general plans, they felt in this particular instance, we had the higher density immediately to the west. It's a much bigger building, and this really steps down. And while the density is a little bit more, the actual scale of the development was consistent with that. And I think commission was comfortable with the companion project. I think if it was a standalone request where somebody just came in and said, "We'd like a general plan amendment. We have no intention on doing a project," I'm not sure anybody would even identify this property for a general plan amendment in that type of situation. So we've, we've worked on this one for probably three years now. And the Canyon, or Vista Canyon project, when it was intended to be part of the hotel, they were asking for a much larger project at that point, and they scaled it way back.
And the bridge.
Originally, it had a, had a very contemporary bridge with some windows in it, as opposed to the other one. And the other challenge that, that really put everybody in an awkward position with this project is that the Indian land lease requires the applicant to build a certain number of units. And the lease was drawn before the actual configuration of the property was fully understood, and, and you would not be able to get the required amount of units under the lease to satisfy the lease terms without the general plan amendment. So it, it was a little bit awkward in that regard. You know, this is Indian reservation land. We've worked fairly closely with the Indian planning process. And, you know, we did get a letter of support from the tribal council with regards to the general plan amendment.
But, but, but it is, it is, is true that, you know, although we, we have a project to look at on a piece of property, the general plan amendment changes the general plan.
That's correct.
And that, and not necessarily that project that we're looking at has to be, or could be built there.
If, if the leaseholder were to default and somebody else picked it up, the general plan would be changed, and we'd probably have most of the same site design constraints if somebody were to try to do a project under the same type of permit that this is. I mean, in theory, under the higher density, they could ask for a high-rise building, things of that nature. Those would be discretionary actions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Evans, following those comments and questions, could I ask you, please, to see the elevations you represented in your comments? And will that demonstrate the existing facilities to the west?
I didn't get the boards overlapped correctly, so I, I'll have to show you two different exhibits. The way the project is laid out, this would be the street elevation along Murray Canyon. So you would have a two-story condition in this area next to a two-story condition next door. We don't have any photographs of that property. But as you look back to the west, where the existing timeshare project is located, again, you, you have the existing buildings in this area to the east, the existing project and the series of two-story buildings. And then immediately to the west, you have the three-story timeshare project, which is a bit taller, and it actually has a portion of the parking grade, or parking structure above grade. So you've got three stories stepping to two, to two. And in this particular instance, here's the boundary. At this point, for a setback criteria is roughly right about here for a 200-foot setback to the existing single story. That would show on this exhibit, although it's not colored, this line here. Single story up to this point. And actually, at this point, this unit would transition to a two-story unit, and then the rest of the units would be two-story. And give you a, a massing diagram, this would be from Sierra Madre to the existing project to the east. And then this would be taking a look at the, the section, basically through this part of the project.
Ms. Evans, then, from a height standpoint, there seems to be two-story to two-story relationship to the existing eastern development.
That is correct. And then to the north, it's single story to single story, and they meet the 200-foot setback criteria that would be required in the underlying zones.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Additional comments or questions by council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have any questions. I would like to move the resolutions as recommended. I think they all meet the requirements and certainly look like they would be in addition to be presented in the new general plan this way.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or questions at this time? Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rela Spurgeon, absent. Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is 401. It is deemed approved. Would you please have Ms. Rela Spurgeon join us back in for item 13, for the zoning map amendment for the Drigizavich Charitable Remainder Trust modification? Eastavich. My tongue's a little small. Thank you. Maybe say you're a little butchered. Thank you, Ms. Rela Spurgeon. Mr. Evans?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is the companion item for the Drigizavich Charitable Remainder Trust. This is a change-of-zone application from R2, which is multifamily residential, and R1AH, which is single-family residential with horse, horse zoning. So we're going to lose a little bit of horse property on this one. Not that anybody knew that it was there. To commercial manufacturing, which is a CM zone, and then the hillside portions of the property would be zoned O20. This is the companion item for the change of general plan that you just approved, and the zone boundaries would match the general plan boundaries that you just adopted. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Council, before we open the public hearing, any comments on staff report? Any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item 13, the zone map amendment, please come forward at this time. Very good. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Turn to council for questions or action.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the ordinance for introduction and first reading if the clerk will read the title and wave the text.
No, I'll second that.
Excellent motion. Thank you. By Ms. Hodges and second by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll read the title, please?
It's to be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the zoning map by approving a change of zone from R2 and R1AH to CM and 020 for the property located at 4155 East Matthew Drive, Zone R2 and R1AH, Section 30.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rela Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is 50, deemed unanimous. Let's turn now to case 14. Case number 5.0941, tentative tract map 30941, the Palm Springs Modern Homes. Ms. Rela Spurgeon?
I'm out of here.
I think you're out of here, young...
Okay. What is this one?
This is the same one again.
Okay, same issue.
If you could, the, yeah, for the record, you should.
I am abstaining from this issue due to the proximity of my work.
Thank you, Ms. Rela Spurgeon. At the record show that Ms. Rela Spurgeon is now leaving chamber. For those of you watching this action, new rules on the FPPC require any of us that have abstentions that we leave chamber and not be present during deliberation or voting for that matter. So Ms. Rela Spurgeon is abiding by state rule. Item 14. Mr. Ready, your staff's report, please.
Yes, this is a companion piece again to the, the first amendment you did on mitigated negative deck and tentative tract map. And Mr. Evans will give the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much, Member, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is a subdivision map for 48 condominium units. The city council's action is to only act upon the map. The map is a one-lot subdivision for condominium purposes. The project is a 48-unit condominium project and all the related improvements. That particular application was submitted under an architectural approval application, which means they complied with all zoning requirements. An architectural approval application for the actual architecture, site planning, and landscape plan is final with the Planning Commission unless appealed. As a courtesy to the city council and the members of the community, I will show you what the project looks like, but the actual action before the council was only the map. The 48-unit project is on property that could accommodate up to 98 to 140 units, so it's substantially under the density that's allowed. They tried to create a, a very creative subdivision and project that I think, and I think the Planning Commission felt, will be very, very well-received in the community as well as the marketplace. The individual units are a little over 1,500 square feet to 1,750 square feet, two- and three-bedroom, and they're one- and two-story condominium units, built in a very interesting pattern. The applicant, Palm Springs Modern Homes, has just completed a project on Arenas Road, Arenas 48. It started out as a 24-unit project. It was very well-received in the marketplace. They purchased the property next door, added another 24 units, and that's been very well-received. So this particular developer has really found the marketplace for condominium development. I can tell you that he's, he's taken a risk in the marketplace relative to building condominium units, that we haven't had new condominiums built in Palm Springs, with the exception of condominium units that are built in conjunction with bridges in quite some time. And that's really because of the State of California construction defect laws and the difficulties in, in building condominiums. And Palm Springs Modern has really broken the ice in Palm Springs. We've got many other people now looking at condominium development, and it really allows for much more creative site designs when you can do condominiums as opposed to town homes or freestanding high-density residential projects. That's a quick overview of the project. Let me show you the plans. The, the project, as I showed before in a site plan, basically is off of Baristo Road and has the cul-de-sac off of Arenas. Basically, it has two through streets that come through, basically serving as internal driveways and courtyards to the project. The project exceeds the required parking requirements. The architecture is a contemporary architectural style with kind of a, a unique overall floor plan, and I won't get into it, but basically, it's, it's a pinwheel, pinwheel-type system where the buildings kind of rotate around so that each, each unit has as much privacy as well as some view and the room for a, a pool as possible. The street elevations on Baristo Road would be shown here. The internal street elevations that you would see if you drove through the project are located here. And then some site cross-sections, you know, units, roadway, units, roadway, to give you a feel of how it would look like as you, you look at it through a section view. The entry gates that you would see off of Baristo Road would look like these two here. And then the entry elevation off of Arenas Road would look like this elevation in this location. If you were to break the units apart and just look at them, if they were freestanding, they basically...
The record show that Ms. Rella Spurgeon has returned to the chamber. We'll go to item 15. Item 15 is a zoning map amendment for case 5.0938, PD 288, tentative tract map 31006, otherwise known as Laguna Pacific Canyon Vista. Mr. Ready, your staff's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is going to ask for a continuance, however, we will need to open the hearing. Mr. Evans is going to give the reasons and the details and the report on this, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that you did act upon relative to the general plan amendment in a previous public hearing item. This is the companion project, and I showed you the street elevations and the site plan a few moments ago. The property is located on the Indian Reservation. We have received three bits of correspondence as part of this project. First, a letter from the tribal council, the chairman, asking that the city council continue this item, so that the tribal council and the Indian Planning Commission can spend a little bit of time going over the plans. It's our understanding that the applicant has met with tribal planning staff today, and there are two meetings with tribal entities scheduled next week, Monday, the Indian Planning Commission, Tuesday, the tribal council. In all due respect for the tribal council, after meeting with the applicant today, the applicant has submitted a letter. If you'd like to see a copy of it, we can pass it out, basically requesting a continuance of this item. We did take a look at the schedule. This project has a fairly unique set of circumstances, some very tight deadlines imposed by the courts relative to performance, and what we would ask the council to do is to continue this item to next week's adjourned meeting. That would allow for the Indian Planning Commission and tribal council to review the detailed plans and submit an additional letter, if they so choose, before your council meeting next Wednesday. That would respect their request. We've taken a careful look at the time schedule, and if we do that, there is the ability to meet the court deadline if the council and tribal council are comfortable with the project, so it would not hurt the project's schedule if we could go to the adjourned meeting of next week. If we don't go to the adjourned meeting, then we do have a scheduling problem if we were to continue this to March 5th. So we're recommending, and the applicant concurs, that this item be continued to your meeting next Wednesday. We do have a scheduled public hearing for next Wednesday at an adjourned meeting, so we're at least set up for a meeting like this. Mr. Mayor, you do need to open the public hearing. I have talked to at least one member of the audience that did come down to talk about this project, and we did receive a letter from the Canyon Country Club with regards to this, regarding a wall on the golf course, and next week, we'll have a revised condition of approval that talks about a wall or fence on the golf course side. The applicant's aware of that, I don't think there's any objections to having a nice barrier between the golf course and the project. Mr. Mayor, that completes our report. We do recommend you open the hearing and then continue the hearing to next Wednesday, if the council so chooses.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Evans. Council, questions on staff's report? Otherwise, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address, please come forward. I have one card, Mr. Ted Malton. Mr. Malton, welcome, sir. You'll have five minutes, the clock will count down from five, and your comments are welcome.
Great, my name is Ted Malton, I live at 465 Santiago Way, which is a small street that starts at the end of Palo Fiero and ends at Sierra Madre. A nice quiet street that has turned into a speedway and also is now being turned into a parking lot. As you can see, I have submitted four different photos. Because of the parking situation, I had a meeting with the manager of the Palm Canyon Resort and Spa, who promised me that he would issue a memo concerning the parking. He did issue the memo, but I think he pulled a Saddam Hussein on me, because he faxed me the memo, but no one else knew about the memo. And after he issued the memo, you can see the type of parking that was supposed to have been eliminated by these photos. These photos were taken after the memo was issued. I'm concerned about the multi-level situation on Murray Canyon Way. I can understand a single level, but because of the high density and the proposed hotel going across the street on Murray Canyon will turn the entire neighborhood into a definite high-density trafficked area. If the Planning Commission could see a multi-level situation on Sierra Madre that does not face any of the homes, my home faces the particular property that's going to be multi-level on Murray Canyon, this way, if some of the multi-level situation could be diverted over to Sierra Madre, there are no homes that view that particular area, you just view down the fairway of the golf course. The other thing that I'm concerned about, and I think it was brought up by a letter sent by the golf course, was that there was no wall, and naturally, people would come onto the golf course, which would affect the security of my particular home and also the value of the property. That's my entire story, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this item, item 15? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Jan Hart, I'm general manager of Canyon Country Club. Excuse me, I just wanted to reiterate our concerns about security on our golf course, runs along my third fairway and green and behind my four tee box, and my board of governors does have great concerns. We're looking for something more than a barrier. We want to prevent any of the timeshare traffic coming onto our golf course. That is our concerns, as I'm sure you can understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on item 15? Very good, seeing no one, we'll close the public, no, we'll continue the public hearing, is that correct? To the adjourned meeting scheduled for 2/26/03. Do you need formal action to that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hodges and second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon to continue this hearing and this item to our adjourned meeting on February 26th of this year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's deemed unanimous, 50. That completes our public hearing for tonight. Council, what's your pleasure?
Oh, I've had plenty of breaks.
Genie's fine, let's take a quick 10-minute recess.[1064.12]
Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order and we'll turn to the council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. Council? What's your pleasure? What's your reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
On Saturday, I attended the Health and Wellness Fair for Black History Month at Desert Age Project. And one of the things that was really unique, I think, about the presentation and the fair is that they had a group of teenagers there from Planned Parenthood who gave different plays on sexuality and issues and situations that young people might find themselves in. It was just outstanding. It was just outstanding. On Tuesday, I attended a portion of the meeting with the Movie Colony residents. And I want to say that Commander Stars did an excellent job, I think, in his presentation. Very good, very good. I'd also like to say a special congratulations to Tarazo Palm Springs Resort for Men, a new business, Pride Nation Networks, a new business, and the Opening of World Gym, also a new business. Last evening, I also had the opportunity to meet with between, well, I'd say, close to forty former employees of the Marquee Hotel. All of those other people that I met with, with the exception of two people are Palm Springs residents. They are quite concerned, obviously, about their jobs, at the loss of their jobs. In several situations, as they introduced themselves and told of their personal experiences, in some households, it were two and three members of a family who worked at the hotel. Inasmuch as someone may be purchasing this hotel, and I know this really falls under a request, but I think it would be to our advantage to economically, to protect the citizens of Palm Springs and their jobs as much as possible, and to end this negotiation process, that we talk with them about making sure that they not only give priority to our Palm Springs residents and the former employees of the Marquee, to make sure that their jobs are secured and that our economy and that our citizens are stabilized. So I know that that comes under a request, which actually comes later, but I wanted to say it at this point to so that the council would be aware of what their concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Oden. Other council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports? Just a couple of quick ones. Today, at the Cielo Vista Elementary School, they had the students out on the fields, behind some fencing, and two Marine helicopters landed on the playground. And they came up from San Diego. And it was a Huey and a Cobra, and each of the students got a chance to talk to the Marines firsthand and to see the aircraft up close. And parents came, and it was just basically a recognition of those individuals who are serving our country right now, and letting the kids see firsthand the military in action. It was a remarkable day. And Sherry was there, Sherry Stewart was there from the Board of Education, and I'm pleased to see the board supporting the opportunity for the military to come and actually land helicopters at schools. It was quite a nice day. I then went down to the Extended Stay Hotel, Extended Stay America, as you all know, 104-room hotel on Takowitz, next to the courtyard, opened officially today, if you will, the ribbon-cutting. Very well-attended, took a little tour. That's the first hotel property built in Palm Springs in well over a decade. So I welcome them, obviously, to the hospitality family, and they are willing to do whatever they can to join those of us in the hospitality industry to succeed in Palm Springs. Friday night, I had the pleasure of joining friends, including Mr. Mills and his wife, and we saw the first of the, look who's talking, Mayor Rudy Giuliani was in. And a pretty remarkable guy to hear how he went through his trials and tribulations in New York during 9/11, but managed to maintain what he even says is important in leadership, which was a sense of humor and a real enjoyable speaker. I have dropped off for you this packet at your station. I gave one to the city clerk. It is basically a compilation of a number of emails and reports that have been coming forward from a number of sources, and I cite them in the report. The intent really is to bring to your attention the fact that the state of California, in dealing with their deficit of in excess of $28 billion, is slashing a number of programs. And the one that is the concern of this briefing is the California Division of Tourism. They are indicating they're going to slash the state's side of the partnership, and by doing so, reduces the effectiveness we have in getting partnerships for selling and securing tourist dollars here in California, let alone Palm Springs. So you'll see by evidence of the report from the CBA and the letters that came in and the emails, the general consensus and request is that we take action to send a letter to Sacramento to our legislators requesting that they do not slash those dollars. And I bring it to your attention for future action. This could come, as Mr. Oden had said earlier, under the heading of "Request," but I want to make sure it's on the agenda so that you're aware of it. And I would like to request that this be brought forward for council's consideration in a formal sense at the next meeting, so that we can take action to authorize a letter. And I'd like to see a resolution of support, if the council will embrace it, so that we can send the resolution accompanying that letter. No secret, tourism is vitally important to this community, and any effort by the state to reduce or cut entirely their funding support would not be in the best interest of the great state of California, let alone our city. So, again, this report is for your perusal later on. Any other council reports, announcements, or inter-agency reports? You're good. Seeing none, let's turn to our legislative calendar. Item 16 is ordinances for second reading and adoption, first introduced on 2503. This is discussing merged project plans 1 and 2. And I'll ask at this time if any members would like to note their abstentions for the city clerk's record.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain from this issue due to the proximity of my home.
Thank you, Ms. Rella Spurgeon. And Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills.
I need to abstain in that I own a property in the old 9I area.
Thank you, sir. The records show that Ms. Rella Spurgeon and Mr. Mills are both leaving the chamber based on their conflicts of interest. Let's turn now to Mr. Ready for his staff report on item number 16.
It's ready for second reading, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. There's no staff report. Council, what's your pleasure on the second reading?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the ordinances, asking that we waive the reading of the text with the title only.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Oden and Ms. Hodges. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, may I just, there was reference, again, that eminent domain in the desert highlands area. This does not apply to residential. I just want to confirm that one more time, that this does not apply to residential.
That is correct. It applies to commercial property.
Right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ready. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the title of both ordinances, waiving text.
It would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending merged redevelopment plan for the merged redevelopment project number one. And the second one would also be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the merged redevelopment plan for the merged redevelopment project number two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills? Absent. Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon? Absent. Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes 302. Could I request, please, that the members of the council that have stepped out join us back again for item 17? Item 17 is a variance, 6.463, location 3863 East Calle San Antonio. This is an appeal. I'll ask Mr. Ready for his staff's report, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, this has been continued from the last couple of meetings. There was a subcommittee of council, which was Mr. Mills and Mr. Oden. We did not think that they had met prior to a staff report being timely to be in this agenda. We were going to ask for continuance until February the 26th. However, I understand the subcommittee has met, and they may have a resolution they want to bring forth today, or we could continue it. I would yield to the subcommittee your pleasure.
Members of the subcommittee, Mr. Mills, Mr. Oden, do you have a report for council?
I think we did review this item. I think we have a viable solution that everyone appears to be comfortable with. And I understand Mr. Evans has the report, and he could certainly give it and issue it, and the resolution was ready to go. And I think it'd be timely to move this issue along.
Thank you, Mr. Oden.
I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Mr. Evans, if we may, your staff report then, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You've had a series of staff reports on this and a little bit of dialogue amongst yourselves over a couple of meetings. Yeah, I'll pass them out.
Can I?
Just a second. What we've done, I've taken the liberty, based upon talking to the subcommittee of crafting a resolution, and basically, the resolution goes along this line. It basically overrules the planning commission. The planning commission required a three-foot setback. This would overrule the planning commission and allow the structure to be on the property line. In addition to the standard requirements of reconstructing portions of the building to meet building code requirements, which we described to you at your last meeting, the applicant, Mr. Flanagan, would be required to secure an easement from the adjoining property, a family member, for a three-foot no-build easement. So that there could no be, no further encroachments into that three-foot area. And in fact, it really is a wider no-build easement because of the way the building codes work. But we saw that it really only needs to be three-foot. In essence, if you look at it as a creative way to essentially say the property line for building purposes is now three feet over, it provides the same physical protection that the planning commission's intent for a three-foot setback did, although it achieves it differently. It encumbers the adjoining property and creates a condition where you can't build within that three feet. And in essence, the existing carport on that adjoining property would be the limit of any development. The easement would only have to be adjacent to the actual structures. So it doesn't have to be the whole length of the property, because the easement probably will require some form of compensation to the neighboring property owner. I've gone over this. I've outlined it in a resolution. And if you want to take a look at it, the easy way to take a look at it is to basically look at conditions four, five, and six on the last page. They're the operative ones. And I tried to craft findings that would fit what I basically just described.
Mr. Evans, I might suggest, yeah, we haven't got that. Thank you. We haven't got the handouts at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
I did have an opportunity to read through the resolution earlier before the meeting, and I would like to make a motion for approval.
And I will second that.
Motion for approval by Mr. Mills and seconded by Mr. Oden. Any additional comments or questions on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Resolution, Ms. Hodges.
I would just like to thank the subcommittee for working with the applicant and getting this resolved in the best way we can possibly do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this forever follows the deeds of the properties?
These are somehow recorded against both properties, then? Is that the correct response?
The easement would be recorded against the neighboring property, and the variance is the force and effect on the Flanagan parcel. If, for some reason, they didn't comply with all these conditions, in essence, the variance becomes null and void. So that's a pretty big penalty for the Flanagan property.
Okay. Any council comments or questions on this? I guess the only concern I have is that the solution, albeit creative and seemingly resolves the issue, is not one that I would suggest become a precedent that could be easily afforded others that are dealing with this same violation. And I've had, as you know, a different position than the council majority on this issue from the get-go, but I do appreciate the efforts of the subcommittee in attempting to find a solution that at least the majority can embrace. Any other further comments? Otherwise, Mr. Mills, Mr. Oden makes a second. I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
No. 4-1. The resolution has been approved. Let's turn now to item 18, which is the 2003 American Heat Bike Weekend. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, what's requested of you this evening would be a suspension of the noise ordinance for this event. As you recall, the Bike Weekend was not in Palm Springs last weekend for several reasons, but not the least of which was on the recommendation of the police chief at that time, on some intelligence information that they had based on the Laughlin, Nevada, issues. That situation has changed. What we did tell the promoter at that point was that what we would do is we would take this request to the city council early in this year, so we would not have to wait until close to the event, and then have to not have the approval from the city council. So he puts all the time and effort and money into the event not to actually have it. So as fairness to the sponsor of the event, we are bringing this to you at this time in February, well before the event, so city council can, at least at this point in time, make a decision on the noise ordinance, which says at least they would embrace the concept, given all things, the situation being the same, that we would go forward with it. So that's what's before you this evening, is in essence, suspending the noise ordinance so the Bike Weekend can go forward. And with that, I would ask Mr. Mike Sell, the Director of Parks and Recreation, to come forward and give you the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Good evening, Scott. How are you this evening?
Excellent, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Everybody pretty well has already given my report for me, but I'll go ahead and fill in the blanks as I know them. The action before you suspends or adopts a resolution to suspend certain ordinances to allow the Bike Weekend to occur in the Central Business District, October 17th through October 19th. As you know, Roadshows Incorporated has produced two events in the past, in 2000 and 2001, in the Central Business District, and they've now come back to seek approval for 2003. And to allow that event to occur, you need to suspend certain regulatory ordinances. In 2001, you supported this event through your suspension of the ordinances. And Roadshows produced the event in the Central Business District from Alejo to Baristo at its sole expense. And it's been brought to your attention that the Hospitality Association is supportive of this event. The Main Street merchants are supportive of this event because it brings a tremendous amount of revenue into the community. The last estimates that we had at the special events level were that there were 40,000 people who attended the event, obviously filling up virtually every hotel room in town. And this creates a significant financial impact to us through TOT and the various other tax revenues to the city. The event has been before the special events planning team, and it virtually has not changed in its scope as to what is being proposed from the 2001 event that occurred in downtown. As I mentioned earlier, Main Street unanimously supported this event. And again, the Hospitality Association unanimously supported this event. And the promoter has agreed to, there were some issues, albeit somewhat minor, but vendor-related and logistically related as to how the event occurred. The event, the promoter has agreed to work closely with the Merchants Association and also the Hospitality Association to essentially improve upon the event. That's a kind of a standard thing that we do in special events, is we take a critique of the event and try to work through that so that it becomes better and better each year. Some of the things that we've done in the past to address the noise concerns is post-signage throughout all the various side streets. That will again happen. We will have a more aggressive or police presence in there during the event for security purposes. The promoter will secure the perimeter of the event. We put up traffic signs. They have a substantial presence monitoring all the traffic barriers through the downtown. And all of this is done at the promoter's sole expense. They don't come to the city and ask us for anything, or they have not as yet. I should represent it that way. The promoter is proposing a three-day closure in downtown on Palm Canyon to begin on noon on Friday and run through 3:00 p.m. on Sunday. That was proposed- That was proposed to the downtown merchants and endorsed at that point, too. They're not real popular with street closures, but they understand the commerce that comes in with this event. The promoter, again, will work closely in promoting the event in conjunction with our tourism folks and also the Hotel and Hospitality Association. You heard some comments earlier about the various amenities, such as beer gardens, placement of vendors, and all of those issues. At the Main Street meeting, they want to work closely with Mr. Burke of Roadshows so that the specific placement is consistent with what their desires are, whether there's two beer gardens, three beer gardens, where they actually end up, and all of those items will be worked out with Mr. Augburn to his satisfaction and the satisfaction of Main Lastly, this event went before the Parks and Recreation Commission last week. That was one of our last approval items before it came to you, and it was supported six to one by them at that point. And if there's any further questions I might be able to ask or answer, I guess I shouldn't ask. You do. I'll be happy to, and the promoter's here, too.
Thank you, Scott. Counsel? Questions of Mr. Michael. Questions of other staff members. I might ask the police department to come down and give us a review of their concerns based on last year and how their position is this year. Commander McCabe, pleasure to see you tonight, sir. How are you?
Good evening. The chief is out of town, so he has asked me to come and speak on his behalf.
Thank you.
I have to tell you that unfortunately, the police department does not support Bike Weekend. There's a small but very significant criminal element that comes to town during that time, and the potential for violence and the potential for a tragedy is very, very large. The promoter does a really good job in the venue area of providing security. But what you have to understand is the main problems occur outside the venue area. They occur on the streets, they occur on the sidewalks, they occur in the restaurants, and they occur in the bars. And what happens is this criminal element comes in, these biker gangs come in, and they kind of mark their territory. They will come in and take over a restaurant, they will come in and take over a bar, and they will start partying in there. And after they've had some alcohol, after they've possibly used some marijuana, they start to front each other off, and that's when the problems begin. And that's where you have your potential. And even though things have been quiet since Laughlin, our intelligence tells us that there are some potential problems that you need to consider. There are murder contracts that are still out on various members of the outlaw motorcycle gang. The outlaw motorcycle gangs are not wearing their gang colors in the events in an attempt to hinder law enforcement identifying these individuals. And some motorcycle gang members have filed lawsuits against the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department for their failing to protect them against violence. So, yes, it does fill up hotel rooms. Yes, it does have a positive effect on restaurants and on businesses in the downtown area. But what you're doing is you're putting Palm Springs on the line. All we need to do is have one major incident, a shooting, a stabbing, something of this sort. And I can tell you, I've been downtown during the last couple Bike Weekends, and that potential is very real. All you have to do is drive up and down the streets during that time and see the way, way that the outlaw bikers conduct themselves, the way they treat each other, the way they treat the public, and you can see it is a powder keg with a match right next to it, and it can explode at any time. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Commander. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Thank you for the information that you provide. I have a couple questions. Is this the only event that comes to the city where you see that potential, that small but significant criminal element?
I'd say that there is no other event that has the magnitude of Bike Weekend where you get that type of number of gang members coming down here.
Proportionately. Proportionately.
Proportionately, yes.
So if we had a smaller group that still had a small but significant number of criminal element, that actually, even though it's a smaller number, they may actually have more criminals?
That's possible, yes.
I, I am just a little concerned that... Well, let me ask you this way.
Okay.
If, if the, last year, the promoter made several suggestions of bringing in additional help. Last year, we were told, in spite of all the assistance that they could bring in, that the chief felt like he could not create a safe environment. Do you still feel that way?
That is still the feeling of Chief Chindron. That is still his recommendation.
Okay.
Is that, if I could answer the question, if that, that potential is there, we have the potential of putting the entire police department working that weekend, which we estimate is going to cost about $33,000 in overtime to do that. And we can call on mutual aid, we can call on the Gang Task Force, we can call on some other resources that we have to help us. And if the council approves it, we'll do our best to police it, but you need to know upfront the problems that are potentially there.
Scott, please.
Thank you, Commander.
Yes, sir.
In, in terms of the support financially for this event, what has the promoter done historically in terms of covering the expenses?
The last event that occurred in 2001, there was a total of $28,700 and change in expenses attributable to the event. Most of that, or the lion's share of that, was, was staff costs. Most of it was police department. Over $17,000 of it was police costs. The remainder was split between the fire department's streets, special events staffing, and some facilities maintenance costs. Our estimate for the coming year, given any contingencies or whatever at the present time, is that those costs are going to go up to about $33,000 for the promoter. If the, as, as the commander indicated, if the entire police department had to be reactivated for this event, that cost alone would be $33,000. If you added that to our estimate, then the cost to the promoter would be in the neighborhood of about $45,000, $46,000 total for the event. So with those, and I discussed that with, with Mr. Burke before the program tonight, and he's aware of those costs. And as the event unfolds, and we begin to put together the plan as to what the PD requirements are, the police or the fire requirements are, and, and all of those other things, if the event becomes cost prohibitive to Mr. Burke and Roadshows to produce based upon what our costs are, then he would come forward and, and not do the event. I mean, that's always been Randy's choice, and he is fully aware of that, in, in that that we will determine what it is that we feel as a community needs to be done to make the event safe. And then it becomes, the ball's in his court at that point. And we honestly, we're in the very preliminary stages of this. Randy knows that, we know that at the special events level, and so does police and fire and everybody else. As we evolve this event into the spring, and we start working out those, hammering out those details of how many vendors Randy can have, or that is acceptable to the Main Street merchants, and then he is able to determine what his revenue stream is going to be, then it becomes his choice as to whether or not he can support the event out of his revenues, or he has to look elsewhere, or that maybe he doesn't do it. And that's the way we've left it in the past, and Randy's amenable to that today.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, let's have one more question for, for the commander.
Commander McCabe, would I ask you to come back down, please? Thank you, Mike.
You, you were saying earlier that it is the feeling of the department. Does that mean that there was some sort of vote taken by the department, that the department feels that way? What does that mean?
No, that is the recommendation of the chief of police. That's his recommendation. We have not taken any vote or anything of this sort. But I can tell you that we have our senior management staff here. We have Commander Mike Hall, who's going to be the incident commander if the weekend does in fact happen, and he's going to be supported by Commander Ron Stars. But if they had an opportunity to come up here and talk to you, they'd tell you the same thing, is that nobody on the command staff, that means the commanders and above, are in favor of this event. We all see the potential and the problems that can happen, and we really, you know, care about Palm Springs and care about the safety of this community. And if this event goes forward, we cannot guarantee that.
Well, I certainly appreciate the fact that you care. I think everyone cares about the city, the business people, as well as the residents, and we certainly want what's safe for our community. So I appreciate your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
Let me ask, Mr. McCabe. Commander, when Main Street took their vote, when the Hotel Association took their vote, when Parks and Recreation took their vote, had they been presented with the recommendation from the chief of police?
I know that Main Street was, was given the recommendation, because I know Commander Hall was present at that meeting. The other groups, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rallos-Purgeon?
Have any of these Bike Weekends occurred in any other cities since the Laughlin event?
If I could call Commander Hall up, he's been gathering the intelligence on that, and he could speak to that much better than I could.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Commander Hall, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The preliminary intelligence that we're receiving is there hasn't been any major events equivalent to Laughlin from last year. They start kind of beginning in March. You have Daytona in Florida, you have Laconian, New Hampshire, moves to Laughlin, and then, of course, to our event in October. I can say that the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at this point is gearing up for a major event, bringing in all the agencies that they're allied with, as well as state and federal agencies help to support them. And probably after we see Daytona and any events that take place there, as well as, of course, Laughlin and Hollister in Northern California on the Fourth of July, we'll have a better idea as to how to prepare for this event.
Mr. Mayor, another question that I have is that last year, when we denied this event, it was rumored that other city, another city in the Coachella Valley would gladly accept the event. And the concern was that Palm Springs would still be inundated with the motorcyclists, and the support would be to the hosting city, and yet we would have the, the backflow of it. What, what do you know about that?
I would think that we, we would receive a residual effect from that, from that event, because we're talking with 40,000 people, I believe, was the estimate that Scott gave. So certainly, we would have a residual effect and have to respond to that tactically, yes.
And yet not have the financial support to do it because the promoter pays for...
Pays for the venue event, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I think if you, if you follow, Mr. Mayor, if you, if you follow the, the thought process that Ms. Rallos-Purgeon was doing, which I appreciate, you would, based on what we've seen in the past, if it happened in an adjoining community, as far as the news broadcasts would be, it would have happened in Palm Springs.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, so, so the, I think it's something, something we need to think about. Thank you very much, Commander.
The issue tonight is just for the suspension of the noise ordinance. It is nothing else. It's to allow...
But that's allowing the event, is what you're doing.
I think you're right.
You're giving him the okay to do the event.
It speaks of city endorsement, sponsorship under the second line of the resolution.
It allows the process to continue and...
No, you're not going to, you're not going to pull the wool out from underneath after this is approved.
I think it's pretty specific about the dates, the location. I mean, it's, the resolution seems to indicate, and I could ask for clarification from the staff, but it seems as though it's authorizing suspension of the ordinances for the event.
Like I'm trying to say, is that what Scott said was that as the process continues and we make our demands as far as what we need from the promoter, the promoter will financially decide whether or not this is a project in which he feels he can handle. Is that not what you...
I'm going to unfortunately call the commander. I don't, I don't know which one's going to come down this time, but I'd like to ask some questions of the police. Mike, that may be you again. You had mentioned, if you will, some of the behavioral patterns that you've seen in prior years whereby they, they, some of the gangs claim territory, engage in some alcohol, parenthetically some marijuana use or other drugs, and then start getting territorial and then get confrontational between the gangs. Can you illustrate, illuminate in some degree of detail some of the other kinds of activity that the police department was, if you will, in firsthand experiencing in prior years? I know there was talks about you blocking streets because they were going to charge the event down Palm Canyon, and they went around side streets and ran through intersections without, just total disregard of the intersections and the lights, and the hordes of them, and your staffing levels versus their masses, and the, the in-your-face confrontation, as if, as if to egg you on to try to get something going between the police force and the gangs?
Yes, all those did happen, and Commander Hall was there. So I'll call him up again, and he saw it firsthand, and he'd be able to describe it much better than I could.
I'm just trying to bring it forward for the discussion tonight because of my, when I first heard this, I was, number one, I wasn't aware of it until I had a discussion with some of the members of the police department, and then I was somewhat shocked and very much concerned about our ability, no matter how much you empower your force with allied resources and agencies, to deal with the magnitude of what you had seen already in prior years. Commander Hall?
Yes, sir. In 2001, we had an event where the, I believe it was the Mescalero outlaw motorcycle gang had decided, they were at a hotel in the northern part of the city, and the venue downtown had a little entrance area at Alejo, where you would come in if you wanted to park your motorcycle downtown, you would pay a certain amount, and then you'd be able to bring the motorcycle into the venue area and park it. If not, you would park on a, on a side street or adjacent street and walk in. Well, they decided, they had about a hundred members, hundred-plus members, and we received information from a federal agency that was assisting us with the intelligence for that event, who said that about 10 o'clock at night, they decided that they're going to run their pack right through downtown, not pay anything, and charge through the gate. Well, I mean, the gate opening was very narrow, so I mean, the potential for injury for the people manning the gate was, was certainly there. We put together a hasty tactical plan, went up to that gate, waited till 10 o'clock, and sure enough, here they come downtown in their pack run. We had to close off some side streets and ended directing them eastbound. But the intent was clear. They were going to crash right through that gate, causing whatever damage they wanted, and go downtown unabated and do what they want to do, which was to go downtown and, and party and drink. Another incident was when the saloon bar was there. At the time, it happened to be occupied by both Hells Angels and Vagos, I believe. Got to be about closing time. The owner of the bar calls and said, hey, we're having some disturbances between these two gangs. We went down there, responded, and we stood toe-to-toe with them at about 2:00 in the morning, and as Commander McCabe suggested, a powder keg with a match sitting next to it. It was just, you know, they backed down first. I guess they blinked first would be the way to characterize it. Those are two events that, that I know of. Assaults, when I was in investigations during 2001, we investigated an assault. A San Bernardino Hells Angel and his girlfriend came up with the group from San Bernardino. She disrespected him somehow. He grabbed her, threw her into the curb, crushing her head against the curb. This is in front of about 15 or 20 other people left her there. She had ended up with a concussion. Not, it was disturbing enough, it means the act, but those people did not, because of the intimidation and the fear that the Hells Angels carry with them, not one person that witnessed that, one, never offered her any help, never picked up a cell phone to call 911, and eventually just walked away and left her to wander around until she was able to receive medical aid. Those are just some examples that I have firsthand information of.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may, what kind of staffing levels do you believe are necessary for this year's event, from your department and from allied agencies?
Well, Mr. Mayor, at this point, we're going to gather the intelligence based on these other events as I described. If there's no problems at these other events, if we have no significant incidents, then I think we would gear up for that. I mean, not the whole department. Probably something like we had in 2001, maybe a little bit more because of the potential that's there since Laughlin. If these other events in fact produce significant violent events, then I think prudence would tell us that we need to probably have the whole department on like a tactical alert, similar to what we used to do in the old Easter weeks, where we'd have everybody working maybe 12-hour shifts or something like that to deal with the problem.
But that didn't have the violent component. Wasn't violence in spring break. Violence?
Rape?
Well, yeah, there was violence.
Destruction of property?
Certainly. But I mean, you also had the large crowds that we ended up having to police. So I think we're going to look and wait. Myself and a sergeant are going to attend both Hollister and Laughlin this year with, in Laughlin with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Department to see how they're running their organization, seeing how they're putting together all these allied agencies and how they disseminate the intelligence. My personal plan and my direction from the chief was to develop a tactical plan for Bike Week. plan and my direction from the chief was to develop a tactical plan for Bike Week. I'd probably divide that into three or four different areas. One, we'll have a tactical plan for the venue area. We'll develop a tactical plan for the remaining part of the city, which will have a different response. We'll have a tactical plan for our SWAT team. Should there be a major incident, well, they can respond. And probably develop a tactical plan or an operational plan for some type of intelligence center where we can collect, process, and disseminate intelligence to the field units as we get it. And again, to answer your question, probably going to have to wait till it gets a little bit closer and see what these other events this year produce with the biker gangs.
Very good. Mr. Oden?
Of these 40,000 approximate people, how many people are you talking about that fall into this category?
Traditionally, outlaw motorcycle gangs consider themselves one percenters, and that's a patch they'll wear on their jackets. So it's sort of an inexact science. I would say less than 10%. So somewhere between 1% and 10% actually are the problem people or the gangs that come in.
Okay, if you looked at any event that had approximately the same number of people, what percentage of that group, regardless of, you know, if they're drinking alcohol and come to party, which people come here to do, what percentage of them would fall into that category?
That cause law enforcement problems?
Just by the sheer number of people?
I really couldn't give you a number, Mr. Oden. The difference in this is, and our concern is that these are career criminal organizations. Outlaw motorcycle gangs don't exist to socialize. They don't come here with the other, you know, 39,000 people who are motorcycle enthusiasts and who enjoy motorcycling. They are criminals, for the most part, and their ideology and their lifestyle isn't to come here and have fun. I mean, they come here to steal motorcycles, and they come here to cause trouble.
And I would tend to agree with you, except that, to paint this picture that, of all of these people, based upon this percentage, I think is unfortunate. Because I think that when you get that number of people together, you're going to have a certain basic criminal element. For example, how many homicides have we had in Palm Springs this, last year?
I think there was like three or four last year.
Three or four, and we didn't have a biker weekend?
Correct.
Okay. So these things happen. I guess I'm concerned that, I think our job is to provide safety to the best of our ability. It almost sounds like we're trying to guarantee safety, and you can't do it. We can't do it. No one can guarantee it. But we can provide the maximum safety that we can provide. I think the promoter has said it's been committed to do that. I think our officers are committed to do that. And as long as we bring in the resources that are committed to do that, we will create the safest environment possible. And I think that's all that we can humanly do. And with that, I will move the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Oden. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mills. Further discussion? Comments?
I would suggest that we're not painting the majority of these people as criminal elements, as Commander Hall indicated, 1% to 10%, which may seem small in percentage, but in actual numbers of, if it was a one percenter and there's 40,000 people, that's 400 people. And although we did not get a hard number, and I can appreciate the concern of the police given the hard number of how many people are going to be on the streets that night protecting us, I'd be hard pressed to believe that we would have a one-to-one ratio at 400. And I'm certain we would not have a one-to-one ratio if it was a 10%, that would represent 4,000 people. I think the balance that we are always faced with here on council is trying to figure out what's in the best interest of the entire community and deal with all of these very different pressures and determinants. The one concern that I had last year is still basically lingering here, from the standpoint that this issue of the activities of these membership, these minor numbers, as some may represent, are such a concern of mine that I am hesitant to, if you will, endorse an event that would tax our community, and not just our police, but tax our community. And I'm also a little concerned, you know, we do a lot of events. We suspend ordinances. We deal with noise. We deal with crowds. We deal with street closures. But I'm a little hesitant on a three-day closure for downtown. I'm a little hesitant for the noise that's generated. We have a concern in the community about the noise that comes from this event and from these motorcycles, and albeit a benefit to the community from a financial standpoint. Although the resolution would indicate that we have derived that there are benefits that outweigh the inconvenience for the public, I'm not certain I can embrace that.
I'll call for the question.
Call for a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
No.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rosler Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
No. 3-2, we got a Bike Weekend. We'll turn to item 19, Energy Fuel USA Lease.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the ENRG fuel lease. This is the new CNG fuel station, and I would ask Mr. Smoot to give the report on this new station. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this particular item is the item that was continued from a couple of meetings ago, where we were asked to go back and ask some questions and do some additional negotiating, and we have done that. And what I would like to report to you is now what we're proposing is rather than an exclusive lease, a non-exclusive lease for the property, so that if another type of fuel were to come on the horizon, they would want to join in that fueling station, they would be able to do that. They would have to pay Energen some money for their investment to have an equal share in the station, but that would be built into where someone else could come in and do that. Secondly, there was a concern that if the FAA found a reason that they had to come up with a fair market rental on this property, that they understand that the lease would have to be changed at that point, and that language is in there. Thirdly, there was a question about the two-and-a-half cents a gallon that the airport receives, whether or not that could be tied to CPI as their fuel prices go up. We had lots and lots of discussions with them about that. Their concern is that primarily, when the fuel jumps up and down on the index, they don't raise their prices as far as making a profit to themselves. They raise the price just to recoup the actual cost of the index change where they purchased their fuel from. However, in discussions with that, what we ended up with is rather than some type of an adjustment to that, we would end up with, for both the airport and the city, a 15 cent per gallon discount on the purchase of fuel at the station. So the airport would continue to get its two-and-a-half cents on all fuel sales, including fuel sales to the city, but both the city and the airport would receive a 15 cent discount at the fuel pump. So that is a pretty big addition to the agreement. There was also a concern about having multiple reader locations at the stations for customer convenience and water and air dispensers and so on. Those are there. We've even put some stuff in there about the windshield wiper program, if we can figure out a way to do that. And lastly, after the planning commission reviews their plans, the airport will still have to go through the review process and approve it, but I don't anticipate any problems with that. Those are the changes to the lease. At this point, we would recommend your consideration of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Council questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Based upon the concerns of council members and some of your recommendations, as a matter of fact, I think you've come back with a much better document. And with that, I'll move the minute order.
I forgot to say one thing. The minute order has a mistake in it. It doesn't say "non-exclusive lease," so we would ask that you approve the minute order by inserting the word "non-exclusive lease."
Mr. Oden, would you accept that?
I will accept it.
Indeed, he will. Second by Mr. Mills.
That was your recommendation.
Yes. I have one quick question. Can you clarify how this is written? It says that there is a 10-year term with four consecutive lease term options totaling 30 years in full. So if I give him 10, is it five, five, and five? Five, five? Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's what I'm assuming. Okay.
That is correct, and I'll go back and make darn sure that it's clear. If we have to make a couple of minor mods, we'll do that.
And those options come back to council at future years to authorize the five-year extensions. Okay. I appreciate the work, Mr. Oden. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo what Mr. Oden mentioned, is that I think we looked at this lease in a much different state a few weeks ago, and because you like all this stuff.
Yeah.
It is a much, much better lease. And, but thanks to you, thanks to you and to Mr. Smoot as well.
Yeah, Smoot, as always, a good job for us. And Energi, of course, is a great partner, and they'll do everything they can to make this a better product for us. This is going to be a better station. I assure you, this is a much better station. And the idea of a coin-operated windshield wiper dispenser is kind of intriguing, but I think we could just find a bucket with a little squeegee in there, and we'll be fine. Not everyone's going to be going up there looking for a squeegee to steal. We'll just put a squeegee in a bucket. All right. We got a motion by Mr. Oden, and a second by Mr. Mills. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rosler Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
My thanks to the council for their patience in seeing the changes, and again, Mr. Smoot, fine work.
Aye.
5-0 deemed unanimous. We got us a new fueling station coming our way. Item 20 is a procurement software requisition, a 2002-2003 fiscal year budget amendment. So I'll turn to Mr. Reddy for his staff report on this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, what's before you is a procurement software. Council had budgeted this item in the capital budget. We're bringing it to you this evening, and there's a couple twists to this request. We're going to give you a demonstration. The demonstration is going to be, we're going to pull up the City of Tucson, Arizona's website, and the City of Tucson, Arizona, on their website, has this program. In essence, it allows for bidders who want to bid on a city project, whether you want to buy pencils, or whether you're bidding on a bridge, so to speak, or whatever city project is happening, to, in essence, go online, and you can get your bid package, and you can pull it down, and things of that nature. We'll give that demonstration to you in just a moment. But I do want to note, we do have a change, and we will be noting this in the minutes and passing this out to you. What's before you, we're asking you to approve 25,000, what's before you, 25,000 of this is coming from the recycling fund, because this is eliminating a tremendous amount of paper, which is a very good thing. So we're allowed to take 25,000 from the recycling fund to pay for this, but also 18,000 is going to come from the airport fund, because this will also serve the airport purchasing requirements as well. So the net result will be only 43,000 will come from the general fund. So that's the cost breakdown on the actual expenditure. So with that being said, if I could ask Harold to give the report. Harold, do you want to do the...
I'd like to just start here and then...
With the report? Very good. And then he'll give you the demonstration. Thank you. Harold?
Thank you.
Mr. Reddy, Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What's before you is a staff recommendation to upgrade the existing procurement software. The existing software that we have in the city, we've had since 1989, and it is excellent software because it is written for the needs of public procurement, which is very unlike that of private sector procurement, and also very unlike other public procurement systems in terms of, most of the ones on the market are either an extension of an accounts payable system, or an extension of an inventory control system. And for the complex things that we do, such as the parking structure, the expansion of the convention center, and also specifically to meet the mandates that we have for being eligible for grant funding, such as FAA funding, and for transportation grants, both at the federal and state level, we have to be able to track contractors in terms of their DBE status, of the volume of contracts that they do historically, and a whole host of other things. We chose the City of Tucson to demonstrate this because the City of Tucson procurement department is one of the few agencies that does the same scope of services that we do. And we are unlike a lot of other cities in terms of the fact that we do have an airport, and so much of the volume that we do is grant-funded off of that, or the special projects. Keep in mind, when I go on this system, that I'm going on to a live system. And what I've done is I've got an ID number, just logging on to the ICIS, on to the live system, so that the vendor, in this case, or the contractor, is the City of Palm Springs, which you'll be seeing. So what you're looking at, what you're looking at to begin, testing? It's on? Okay, thank you. Okay, what you're looking at to begin with is the City of Tucson's main home webpage. And what you see is e-services in several different places, and then like our website, we have departments. We have doing business with the City of Tucson. There's a lot of different ways to get into this. What I'm going to do is go into e-services, and then the first thing that I want to show you is the bid opportunities. The City of Tucson, as I mentioned, all their competitive procedures, whether it's pens and pencils, office supplies, through architectural and engineering service, RFPs, or construction, all go through procurement, and therefore, they're all collected on their website. So if you see one of these documents, and they all have hyperlinks, so that you can go into the doc, you can simply sign on to download the document, and it'll either download it directly, or it will hook you to a website where you can download the document. And you can see here is the City of Tucson invitation for bid for a forklift. And you can download the whole document, and it has a hyperlink for where you can go to download that particular document, so that you can get it. One of the reasons for that is that documents, like they would here, originate from several different sources, where here, some of the documents would be our public works documents from the public works department, from engineering. Now, as we know, some of those documents have a cost involved, and again, the same thing is true with the City of Tucson, so you can look at, actually, an overview of the, what the bid is for and what the cost of documents are. In terms of our drop-dead need for this software, I referenced the fact that in order to meet the DBE requirements, to be eligible for grant funds for the airport, and for transportation grants, and for state grants, and other third-party grants, that typically, what we have to do is to be able to track a vendor's DBE.
Now, Harold, what you did there is you logged on as a vendor.
Yes.
So vendors will sign up and have their own number, correct?
Right.
Explain that.
That's correct. A vendor will sign up, and the vendor can profile themselves. Now, in order not to fill out these forms from get-go, I filled some of these forms out in advance, and what you'll see is a completed document when this loads, in terms of the information that the vendor would fill out. And what I did was I used the city's federal ID code, logged on to the live system, and then I didn't try to disguise who we were. I logged on as the City of Palm Springs procurement, but in this case, it would be a vendor. And so you can see, it profiles all our information, and then you can go back and edit the information to keep it up to date. One of the big difficulties that we have with our existing system is that we have to do all the data input ourselves, and vendors and contractors are not very good in terms of giving us updates to their contact information or their changing needs. Maybe they're an expanding company, and they sell more things than they did in the past, and we don't know any of that. So here we have the ability for them to profile themselves in terms of the typical things that we have in terms of background information, but then we also have several other key categories. And here, I started out with the organizational structure that we're a government, but this is, what I'm about to show you, is one of the key things in terms of eligibility for grant funding, especially at the federal level. We have to track firms, depending on whether they're woman-owned, minority-owned, and so basically, I can simply click a couple of these, and then when I do a search, and say I'm under the requirement to proactively go out and search woman-owned, minority-owned firms, I can profile this, so it'll either only bring up those firms, or we can have another, a mix... another, a mix of vendors, but we'll be sure to get every single firm that registered with us that's of that particular category in terms of meeting the eligibility. Another important feature of this is that we can look at, if we just have a firm that's within the City of Palm Springs, and we have a process where we say, there's enough local competition, we don't have to go outside the boundaries of the City of Palm Springs, we can simply profile this so that the notification of the available, the bid documents, would only go to businesses within Palm Springs, and then you can profile this, so it would be Valleywide and so forth. And all you got to do is add those categories, so then when I do a search on those categories, I can bring up only those contractors that signed up for those things, and I can narrow the search or broaden the search however I want to. The other key component that I wanted to show you, and I'm almost finished with the demonstration, is that the way we match contractors to what they sell is by what we call a class item or service code. And the way that's done, I'll illustrate, and I'm going to use the background for what we did with the parking structure, where we did it by trade contract. So let's say that a contractor wants to sign up to be, to bid on the system, and he knows nothing about the system, but he knows he's a contractor, and so put in the keyword "construction." And then if you can spell, you're okay, and if you can't, you got a real problem. If he can't spell, he gets nothing. Okay, now you can see that that key word brought all these categories, and the category here that we're going to discuss for purposes of the presentation is trade contracts. And these are the typical classic trade contracts as broken down within the state of Arizona. What's nice about the system is we can profile this and add additional numbers to whoever we elect to break our system down. So if I'm an electrical contractor, and I've already profiled myself in Palm Springs, I'm someone like System Electric, when I go to search for electrical contractors that are local, then I get an electrical trade contractor in Palm Springs and get all the ones that signed up. Again, this adds, would add me to the vendor profile, and from now on, I would get the notification of all bids that involve that particular trade. Any questions as far as the demonstration? Obviously, there's a lot of things I can demonstrate. This is one of the, in terms of the bang for the buck, I think, the most important ones because of what it's tied to, and also because it puts the responsibility clearly on the vendor to be able to keep their profile up to date and to be able to receive bids for anything they want to.
And also, council members, I would note that this is, certainly goes a long way towards our philosophy of doing everything we can to be more business-friendly to the outside business community. Thank you. Harold?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
My question, Mr. Good, is you say, once you've, once you've put that vendor in the category that you're interested in, and you say they are notified, how are they notified?
They're notified by email. One of the things that I didn't show was when the vendor registers, the vendor can choose how they want to be notified. So if the vendor is enabled to receive email, they can receive the notification by email. They can also opt to choose everything by fax or by mail. So if you have someone that only bids occasionally and isn't high-tech, they can still participate in this system. They simply get their documents by mail the traditional way, but most of them, in our experience, will opt for the email.
Thank you. Was there an amended resolution indicating the 18,000?
Sub revised 20A3, Mr. Mayor.